Let's call the meeting to order at 6:31?
6:30.
6:30, good. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 28th, 2019.
I move we approve the minutes from the May 28th meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the...
We gotta vote.
Thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda to discuss with you guys, the energy and lighting upgrades. We can do that after, we can add it now, but let's add it for after the discussion of the exemption of horses from property taxation, so we need a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to talk about the energy and lighting upgrades to Town Hall, Elementary School, and Library.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. And the next is the discussion of the exemption of horses from property taxation. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we were going to review what had been suggested to us, which I think was the Essex exemption, and we looked into a whole bunch of other towns that have had them and a bunch of towns that don't have them, and all of that kind of thing. I'm gonna read to you guys, and I'll make you a copy for after the meeting so you can review it, but this is an example of the exemption done in Killingworth. And the town of Killingworth, I'm just gonna read it straight out right now, and for a lot of ways, reasons, I think this is a positive thing for us. But the town of Killingworth allows an exemption for any horse with a market value of $20,000 or less, provided that upon request from the town assessor, owners shall be required to provide documentation establishing fair market value of any horse. Such documentation shall include, but is not limited to, original purchase price, insurance documents, and evidence of any income associated with breeding sale or competition of such horse. That was adopted in 2014 by Killingworth. I think, I think the reason that I like that is because it answers the question that was asked about how is Robin going to assess horses, and while my response at that time, and I still believe that response, and this is how we've operated generally in the past, is that if someone tells us this is what the horse is worth, this is what we expect, that there's a modicum of honesty and a modicum of trust. All of that said, this allows for, if there is, if there is some reason to believe that that, that there's not, the information is not proper. Robin doesn't have to educate herself on how much a horse is worth, she simply looks to bill of sale, insurance documents, and things like that, which document what the owner of the horse thinks is worth. What is also important to keep in mind about this, is this, this really, in my understanding anyway, and this is why we're not doing anything tonight, we're talking about it, but in my understanding, this really only addresses horses, at least in what I think, what I know of the population of horses in town, now, this only addresses horses that are being boarded. The farms 1291, and I'm just learning this, so I don't, I don't know too much, I just got this today, the 1291 in Public Act 1433 allows for up to $100,000 in property, including horses, to be exempt. All of the four boarding facilities in town, and you can probably speak to this a little bit from your experience better than I can, but all the four farms that are doing boarding take advantage of that already, with only one of those four using up to the 100, up to the total of the exemption. So, ownership, people that own horses in Deep River are, that are Deep River residents are not, unless their horse is over $100,000, doesn't really need to pay taxes on that horse. But if a border is, if they're, if a border is boarding a horse here that's worth $30,000, they will be taxed for...
If we do.
If we do.
Yes, yep.
So, that's, that's where I am, you know, I'll provide you guys with all the information that I have, which is getting bigger and bigger, but I'd like you to think about it, to talk about it if you want to, and we can certainly listen to more folks from that crowd for input.
Sounds like, Dwayne's gonna, something's right there.
My wheels are spinning, so...
Yeah, well, I just got some of this recently, you haven't gotten it, I was, the time to talk about it is now, but I can provide you with the information tonight, and we can talk about it again the next time. And, and no matter what we do, the drop dead deadline on this is October 1st.
Is that a...
It has no impact, and if we do something today, it has no impact until October 1st.
That's a state, or what?
That's when, that's when the taxes...
Oh, that's a tax, okay.
It all has to do with taxes, so...
So, I'm not quite sure if this is a valid question or not, but I'm confused with, if you went with the Killingworth one, just hypothetically, if you went with the Killingworth for $20,000, and this other one for $100,000, for, for a private person, it's $100,000, but for a border, it's $20,000?
Because they're a resident and an owner, property owner, that resides in the town.
Okay, so that's their tax exempt, so to speak, because they're residents?
Sorry, can you repeat that again? So, it's $100?
The $100,000 exemption is for the property owner, like, like you.
Right.
Okay, so you take advantage of a certain amount of that for the cost of your horses and equipment and things like that. A border who does not own that property, owns the horse that, that boards on that property, that $100,000 cannot be attributed to that, doesn't go towards that.
And that's why, that's the 20.
So, if you have a horse that's being boarded that is worth $15,000, that's exempt, if we go forward with what's, what's in front of us now. If you have a horse that's worth $25,000, it's not exempt.
So, where does the equipment come in? You mentioned equipment.
The equipment is in the, in the Public Act 14-33.
You know, I understand that, but it sounded like you're adding the equipment cost in with the horse cost.
In this, in the $100,000, that includes equipment, horses, and, you know, machinery?
Property?
No.
No property?
Property like tractors, things like that, the property itself, no. Property itself, I think, is already getting a, a valued at a farm rate.
From the farm, yeah.
But the problem with that, I don't know if this is the time for me to chime in or...
No, it's fine, yeah, let's have a conversation.
All right, I mean, I can, I agree with what you're saying as far as the $100,000 goes, and it should still cover the equipment, the horses, and the buildings. I know that the, I've been doing a bunch of research, and I haven't got all my ducks in a row at this point, but I know that, well, I think that the 490 Act was developed for the farmers, so if I had, I think we brought this up before, 100 acres of land on the ground, and that would be Farm 490 Act, and we reap the benefits of that, which is good.
Yeah.
But now, as soon as we put a building on it to hold the tractor, and the fertilizers, and the grass seed, and the cutting machines, or whatever, that gets pulled out of the 100 acres, that's what's happening right now in Deep River. So, everything is getting taxed at a different rate now. I don't know how the, how all those numbers go together, and the other thing was, is I'm pretty sure that Joan had said that there were several towns that don't have the horse tax, and that I did talk to a lady at Killingworth Town Hall, and she did say something to the effect of, you know, luxurious super frision horses, or whatever, I'm not sure exactly what she said, I'm not very good.
Yep.
But anyway, it's still, they have a cap on it, they have the $20,000 cap, but if you look at the, and if you remember what Joan was saying, like, I think it was Woodstock, and Lebanon, and Willimantic, and several other towns in Connecticut have actually been exempt from that horse tax completely. So, I believe that's what we were trying to shoot for, and that's what we had discussed before, and verbiage was brought to you, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So, you're still putting a cap on it, and it's not gonna affect, but only the people that have a lot of money to their horses, which, I mean, now you're talking about those sales and all that kind of stuff, too. And then the other thing that I was, I was kinda, kinda picking up on, it's like, it seems like that the horses have to be there October 1st, but the paperwork that I got from Robin, that we talked about a little bit, and it wants to know when the horse was there, and when, you know, when it came and when it left, and, you know, how long it was there, so is that gonna be part of this tax? But, I mean, basically, we're trying to get rid of that whole tax completely.
Understanding that.
We're not trying to put a cap on it, and for the, the whopping $5,000 that Robin said you guys made on these taxes, I mean, I mean, it would be good, fair business, or, you know, that's what the 490 is for, is to help the farmers, so we're trying, we're trying to get rid of that, so we're putting a cap on it, it's still gonna be, you know, you only got one handcuff on instead of both.
Yeah, I, I like, I like the analogy. That's, I'm not laughing away, I like the analogy, so...
And it's, it's just really hard to keep all the numbers in check, you know, every little thing seems to happen, you know, like, right now, my, my outdoor arena is like, the paint is like just falling apart on the thing, and, you know, patching left and right, instead of repairing it the right way, because when they first moved here, a good friend of mine, you know, loaned me a tractor, helped me out getting started, tried to get the place fixed up from the hole it used to be, and he says, "Jack, there's one thing I gotta tell you", it's like, when you fix something, fix it right.
Yep.
But if you don't have the money, you can't make, you know, you got these taxes, plus respect, you know, it's just hard, so, I mean, every little, every little bit is appreciated. If we can get rid of this horse tax, it'd be great, I know we still have more work to do on the 490, more research as far as about how it actually affects the whole farm, because I know that some places say that the, the house, the house on the farm, those people that live there, that own the farm, are part of the farm and are working there, so that's, should be, what we thought was, the whole thing would be 490, so, I don't know if that's some verbiage that needs to be, I don't know if it can be done here, or if it has to be done on the state level, but I don't know what the link between you and the state is, so...
Yeah, well, we certainly can communicate with our legislators, just like you can, but my understanding, yeah, well, they tend to call me, so, if you have, if you wanna call them, come, come here and we'll call them.
All right, I can borrow your phone for a second.
But the, yeah, that's fine with me, but the, we're talking about a couple of different things, and I wanna make sure that we...
Right, I need to throw along all that.
And a lot of this is pretty new to me, and definitely new to Dwayne and Jim, so let's try to go slowly, so we can stay on track and speak at least with some knowledge, right?
Like I said before...
Regarding the buildings and the 490, okay, that, and as I said, I'm learning more and more all the time, but from what I understand, that's a legislative fix, not a local fix. I don't know that for certain right now, but that's what I understand. And I don't think it would be difficult if you got the legislature on board, and I believe that the attorney who's working for Laramore Farms is a legislator. Yeah, so I think that that might be your connection to doing that. Regarding the horses and the, and this, I, I think, and you guys, everyone, please pipe up if you disagree, but I think that this does work for our working farms like you guys, you know, if you have, you've got up to $100,000 that you can exempt, include horses in that exemption.
You're saying they can include them?
Yeah, in, in the PA 1433, or 1291.
But not, not the boarding horses?
But not the boarding, but you're not paying taxes on boarding.
But that's the owner of the horse.
That's the owner of the horse.
Right, oh, I see, yeah, that's not you.
So, that's not you.
That's the owner of the horse.
That's the person whose horse is being boarded at your, at your facility. So, I think, I think these, this, which is already in existence, and is being taken advantage of, combined with this exemption, similar to what Killingworth is, it really does take care of the horse owners and farms in, in Deep River, and, and not so much give folks, you know, bring all your horses to Deep River, because every horse that lives here is exempt, because they're not, it's, I don't know if it's a correct, I don't know if it's, it's not most towns, James. In fact, it's very few towns, but the, it's similar, and I think, I'm, like, you're, I'll throw an analogy out there, it's like keeping a boat in, in a marina, you know, I can keep it in my, on my own property, on my dock, and it's, it doesn't, it costs me the maintenance of that dock, but if I keep my boat in a, in a marina somewhere, then I've gotta pay for the slip, and I've gotta pay for taxes on that boat for where, where it is, you know, wherever I register.
Most people pay taxes on the slip.
Wherever I register my boat, no, they're not paying taxes on the slip, they're paying for the slip, but they're paying taxes to the state when they register their boat.
It's the same with airplanes in Chester, the airport.
So, it's not, it's not an exact, and it's not a perfect analogy, but it's the closest I can come up with right now.
Well, it's, it's like, at the Chester Airport, anybody that has an airplane there, they used to try, the state used to try, the towns used to do property tax. It was changed at one point, and they paid on the way to the airplane to the state a user fee, and then the state reimburses the town of Chester for a portion of that property tax that they're not getting anymore. So, you know, there's 120 airplanes based at the airport, and Chester gets something versus nothing, because a lot of people register their planes out of state, or whatever, and then they get zero.
Now, I don't, I don't, I don't think we pay property taxes on boats, but we pay, it's in the registration fee.
As a prior voter.
Wait a minute, we've got...
What's the, what's the tax on a horse, Doug, you know? If a horse is $20,000...
A $20,000, a $20,000 horse is about 600 bucks.
I don't know what the actual formula is for that, but when we talked to Robin here last week, with, with just $1,000 on the cap, she's only bringing in...
Yeah.
$5,000.
Yeah, no, it's not...
And that was, that was gonna be my question, I know it's a lot of legwork, but if we raised it to $20,000, if we're saying we're only bringing in $5,000 now...
Yep.
Out of $1,000 exemption, and if we raise it to $20,000, what does that $5,000 shrink down to? Does it shrink down to $1,000? Does it shrink down to $3,500?
I don't know.
You know what I'm saying?
We have not...
Yeah, I don't know what the formula is.
Well, the formula is the same as it is for everything else.
But by raising that up to the mill rate?
Yeah, it's based on the mill rate.
But if you're raising it up to $20,000 versus $1,000, there's $19,000 you're playing with now, so we're gonna be collecting less money.
It reduces, it reduces the legwork.
Well, it reduces the legwork, but depending on how many expensive horses are, it might make it up.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to, to get to.
It might make it up, I don't know.
Those are the things, and we understand that, that, I think we all understand that the, the horse owners in particular, and the farmers in general, would like to have just a straight-up exemption.
Absolutely, yes.
But I'm not sure...
I second that.
You're confirming my thought, and that, and that, we understand that, but I think we have to keep, try to balance with the, with the whole of the town, you know, and, and we have, I believe that we're looking at $120,000 worth of value of, of horses, that the Deep River residents don't need to pay taxes on.
Laramore, right now, online, has a horse that's for sale for, I believe, $70,000.
Right.
That's for sale now, it's in the business.
But it's not their, it's not their horse.
It's not their car, I mean, it's not their car, it's not their horse.
Right.
It sounds like, it's, okay, I understand what you're saying, you're saying it's the customers, they pay, probably, not yours, right?
Separate that from you.
You know, and, and keep in mind, some of these towns that throw these exemptions out there, like Essex was the example, the little bit of research that I did was just calling the Essex Town Hall and talking to their assessor, and to their tax collector, and to all the different, the few people that I talked to...
Push one, push three, push seven.
I was looking at new phones, and I'm trying to resist, it's only going that way, I don't like that. But the, they have two horses in the Hall of Essex, so it's easy for them to say, yeah, it's easy for them to say exempt them, they, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, a one owner of two horses.
Because I know that the, the two new farms that came in are gonna be highly affected by this.
Yeah, I, I think they will. The farms won't, their tenants will, and their tenants already are, so this makes it better if they, for them, but...
So, how many horses are there?
I don't know the number of horses in Deep River.
So, you'd wanna create a fine balance from a business standpoint, that you don't want to discourage somebody coming into town, buys private, boards horses, and has a lot of valuable horses that could potentially come. They went to the next town where there were no taxes over the $20,000.
Well, not the border, it's the people that are...
Right, but, correct, but they may have choose not to come to Angus's...
Yeah.
And that's, that's happened already, so, a couple of the, I know, I can't say names or anything like that, but I know a few horses have left the area because of that, you know, it's like, you know...
About Secretariat, it'll take care of a lot of problems.
Well, Jane will tell you all about Secretariat. Go ahead, Sue.
So, it's our local assessor that charge, that charges taxes for the buildings on your farm, and then I was also wondering, does that differ from town to town in Connecticut? That's a question for, for Jake there, Jack, Jake.
It's a question for me?
Yeah.
Does it differ from town to town, it's already developed?
Yeah, now, the local assessor is, is charging you taxes on the buildings on your farm, right?
Right.
And I was just wondering, is that different from town to town, or is everybody getting taxed for that? It must not be different.
I haven't really, I haven't really looked into it, but I know that Ron might be able to help out with this question, too.
I believe that there's two ways it can be done, either by the state standard, or by the town assessor. If the town assessor decides to do it, she has to provide documentation as to how she arrived at her numbers.
Because the state says, you know, farms are exempt from that 100, taxation rate.
It does not say the buildings are.
They have, they have the power to get rid of that.
Yeah, they do, because, because equine businesses are far...
I know the state, I know that the state had said that you don't have, to the towns, that they don't have to charge the horse tax anymore, because I know, personal...
We're not talking horse taxes.
We're talking buildings.
Talking about buildings.
She's talking about those buildings.
And if you're all 490, equine businesses are far...
That is up to the individual town, whether or not they wanna give the exemption to, to the, on the buildings.
Well, I think if we wanna keep equine businesses, we ought to give them that exemption.
And I believe they upped the exemption to $150,000, I believe.
Well, I think if we wanna keep equine businesses, we ought to give them that exemption, don't you? Are we about keeping business in town?
Yes, we are.
So, let's give them that exemption then.
Well, if you wanna go beyond this, we could go beyond this, and let's talk about open space, or ID open space.
I agree, we should talk about open space, and I'm on the Regulations Committee, and we are gonna talk about open space.
You're on the Regulations Committee of what?
The P&amp;Z.
When did you get appointed to the P&amp;Z?
They are not appointed, they're volunteers. They're volunteers, they sit in on meetings, and help collect information, and P&amp;Z and the Regulations Committee have no bylaws, I've asked, do we have any bylaws? So, if somebody in the community is willing to come in and help, I welcome that help.
Good, I was just curious, I don't wanna get sidetracked, I just didn't know Sue was on the P&amp;Z.
But, no, she's not on it, she's, she helps out with the Regulations Committee.
That might be the better way to describe herself than saying that I am on the Regulations Committee.
I didn't say that, I am the Regulations Committee, I'm not a member, I'm a volunteer.
Jane, you had something to say?
Yeah, two things, the Jer Nichols from the Farm Bureau, to her, the regulations read that the 490 extends to the land underneath buildings, and so it cannot be taxed. According to what we've been doing, the 490 goes up to the perimeter of the building, but doesn't go under it, and I'm not...
That is, I've only, I've only read it one or two times, and that, in my interpretation of the language is, is that's what it says.
I...
It's gotta be arable land, but I'm not a lawyer, and neither is Joan, so...
Neither am I. The other thing about the value of the horse, it can change in the blink of an eye, I was talking to somebody that I was swimming with at the W, she bought an expensive horse, and he had, with problems, they had to what's called endurcan, and that was something like, she said, $10,000, and the value of the horse dropped to essentially nothing, and that can happen, you know, in, in the blink of an eye. So, I think that you're asking a lot of Robin to, because somebody may come in and say, you know, here's what I, what I put down, but here's what my vet is saying is wrong with my horse.
Well, that's, that's easy for the horse owner to do.
Yeah, I know, but it's hard for, for Robin to say, well, you know, I guess that drops the horse value, I mean, that's asking a lot of her.
Okay.
Well, what you say, from what you said, you're relying on a bill of sale, or...
Insurance assessment.
Documentation, insurance assessment, and all the different things that document the value of the horse.
There's a lot you love there, I'm not gonna pick up on insurance policy.
We have a lot to get done, insurance.
I would guess that if you got a $30,000, $40,000 horse, you're gonna pay insurance, I don't know, I don't own a horse, but I can't imagine that you would...
They do call it insurance, that's usually about it.
I'm surprised.
So, yeah, it's contrary to what I've been considering, I don't know.
So, the last thing I'd like to leave on a tailing before we jump off this, because I hope we're not jumping off yet, we're still pushing, hopefully, to, to get rid of the horse tax completely.
I understand that, yep, I'm just, we're, I brought it, I brought it up here because I said I was going to, and we're talking about it.
Appreciate that.
I understand that, I understand, and I think we all understand that, that the horse farms and horse owners would like to have no taxes on their horses, I think that's pretty clear. I'm not sure that that's the direction that I would like to go now, but it certainly is, is still on the table, it's still being, which, this is being discussed, so...
So, what would make you change your mind about that?
I don't know, I'd like just more conversation, something, something that shows, something that really shows me that, that keep, that this exemption is hurting Killingworth, that people are coming here or going somewhere, going to Essex with their horses as opposed to Killingworth, because Killingworth has this $20,000 cap on it.
And one of the gentlemen, was it Kevin's, Kevin's meeting that night was a representative from Killingworth?
You know, that, those are the things, a good, a good argument that says, this is really bad, this still is hurting Deep River, and, and I don't think it does, but I'm, we're open for a conversation on it.
Well, ultimately, it's gonna hurt me, because if somebody comes in and has to pay taxes on the horse, they might move to the one on the other side of...
But they haven't been paying taxes on the horses now?
Well, my customers are paying taxes on their horses, absolutely.
And that was my, that was my initial question.
It's like, this isn't a new tax.
And this will actually give some relief to some of your listeners.
Some people might not ask for it, but then I also heard rumors, I don't know how true it is, I'm not, I'll have to go back to my files, because I'm not real good at that kind of stuff, the, when the customer doesn't pay the taxes, then, maybe I should, I should get more and more ducks in a row.
I don't know about that, I haven't heard anything.
That, that tax would put onto the owner of the property.
I can speak to you, that's, I believe that that's part of a lawsuit right now, and I can, I can explain to you a little bit of what that is, if you want to, but I don't think that we should do that in public.
Gotcha.
Because I don't think that's 100%, your description was not 100% accurate.
I know exactly, but I did hear something from them.
The description was not accurate, it was a matter of information being withheld.
I'm trying to find that little, that little thing that gets you saying, okay, we shouldn't do that.
You were talking about town resident $100,000 exemption, now is that, is that...
Farmers, farmers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but is that a, is that the first $100, or if someone has $110,000?
Up to $100,000.
So, their first $100,000 remains exempt?
Yeah, that's how I read it, but I just got it, I just got this...
And they're wanting to make that clear, because if someone has $110, are they going back to $1,000?
No.
Again, it wasn't clear, that's why I asked.
Anyone else? Hi. You guys have any more? Okay, so we'll just continue this conversation, table this for now, not making any decisions. I'll make copies and email you guys what information I have as I get it.
I appreciate you bringing that up, I think that's appreciated.
No, thanks, we'll keep talking about it, thank you for coming and having the conversation. The next item was added, the energy and lighting upgrades, this is a, we've been talking about this for, for a few months now, the financial agent has sent me some information, and they're asking us, let me just explain for everybody that... us, let me just explain for everybody, that what we're looking to do is to upgrade the lighting and the HVAC systems at the Deep River Elementary School, the town hall and the library. Um, it's a cost of two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, um, but it's financed through a loan that is paid back by, uh, by the, in the electric bill. So in the end, right now, the project is, um, it's projected to save forty thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars annually in energy costs. So, um, you know, if over, over a ten-year, um, lease-to-purchase loan, the payments will go back and paid through our bills, and we'll save forty thousand dollars a year over those ten years, and, you know, hopefully, as, as time goes on, but the loan will be paid off in ten years.
And that's at that three point seven seven percent.
The reason that we're talking about this tonight is because, um, if, if, if you guys believe that this is, um, something worth pursuing, I, I need you to authorize me to sign an agreement with the lender, not, or not the lender, but the, uh, the finance company, they're not actually doing the lending, but they're the finance company, kind of the broker, with them to move forward with the financial agency to lock in the rate at three point seven percent, three point seven seven percent.
But does not commit us to.
Doesn't commit us to the project.
Locks in the industry.
We can't do the project without a town meeting, I can't borrow, we can't borrow this money and move on with this project, spend this money without a town meeting.
It's, it's kind of similar, but not the same as locking in your oil rate.
Yep.
Come winter time, locking in a price.
What it does is, it, it gives them enough confidence that, that we, um, want to move forward with the project, so they'll spend the effort to, uh, to get the paperwork started and lock in on the interest rate.
In case we do.
It does not commit us to the project, it does not commit us to the borrow, it just gives them some degree of confidence that we, that we want to move forward.
So that's heating and air conditioning?
Heating, air conditioning, and electricity.
So the heating.
And lighting.
Lighting, so there'd be new boilers for this?
No, that's all been done, it's more has to do with piping, vales, and, and, and other things like that, the, the boilers over there are only three, going on three years.
Those are pretty new.
Propane or oil?
Right now, it's propane, but we have, I'm sorry, natural gas, but we, we, when we made the change, we committed to the gas company for three years of using gas. Gas prices have gone up, and, but in the process, we retained, we kept an oil burner, so we have the ability at the elementary school to burn either oil or gas, whichever we want to, at the end of this year, because that's, this will be the end of our third year. So we have the ability to burn whichever is more efficient. Um, here at the town hall and at the library, we do not have that ability we have, we are just gas. But the, the bulk of the savings will be through the elementary school.
That's the biggest one.
Yeah.
Did you shop for finance?
Did we shop for finance just in, through the process? This is, this is pretty much driven by Eversource?
Yeah, it's the power company.
The power company. So this is a company that works with, with Eversource. I can tell you that, um, the interest rates on things that I have shopped, just, just to keep in loop with what's going on with things like the, um, firehouse construction, those are upwards of four and five percent. So this seems to be a pretty good rate. Um, you know, but who knows? This has to be done before Thursday, they're gonna lock in, I'm gonna send the, part of the note to them is that I will, I'm happy to lock in to not go up, but if it goes down, I'd like to enjoy that lower rate.
So while in your midst of shopping around, and you find something for three percent, are you still obligated to that guy for three point seven?
We're not sho, we're not shopping for financing, these, Eversource only works with a couple of different companies, this is part of, part of those, that group, this is the rate that they, this is the rate that they have, they've, they've been able to, to supply.
Or if their rate goes down.
What I'm, what I'm asking is if.
Which is not gonna, never goes down.
No, you never know, it's, it's driven by the federal rates, right? So, I'm not sure, it's driven by the Fed, so whatever the Fed's doing.
So the lighting, so the, they'll be replacing fixtures or the bulbs?
Yeah, I, I don't have the details of what they're gonna replace, but it's more than likely going to be lights, uh, fixtures, um, and things like that, the air conditioning, um, they'll probably dig into the AC quite a bit, uh, but the elementary school, they will not put a, um, a central vacuum, a central air in there, it's a building that's not, it's not designed for that.
They got the.
Which is what I would like, but that's a, that's a huge project for them to do.
Is there gonna be any PCB waste in the valves on that, in that school?
I don't, I don't think so, that's been, that, all of that stuff's been done, uh, when we changed the, when we changed the boiler out, but I, I don't know.
There's just so many different ways to go, I mean, I'm sure you're probably going to LED, right?
Yeah, it's all going to LED, and that's really where they're projecting the savings today.
At the ambulance park. And it, it looks, it looks better, nothing else, but it also cuts down.
I'm sure, I mean, I have four hundred watt mild hot lines in my, I can afford the lights, I can afford the lights that go in there for LEDs, they're just way, way ring. So if we can save some taxes on horses?
Another plug.
It makes a difference.
So you want.
So if I can get a motion to authorize me to authorize the finance, energy finance group to move forward with locking in the interest rate, and that's all we're doing, we're not locking into the project, we're not locking into the borrow, simply encouraging them to move forward.
What's the name of that company?
Uh, the National Energy Improvement Fund, and this is NEIF Commercial Energy Finance Group.
I, I move that we, uh, we contact NEIF and, and lock in the, the interest rate with the stipulation that if the interest rate goes down.
We will try that, I'm sure that we can guarantee it, that didn't come up in the conversation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, that brings us to Audience of Citizens. I don't have much to talk about, um, that's coming to my head right now, so we got, you know, we'll be paving Westbrook Road, is scheduled to be paved, and Book Hill Road is scheduled to be paved, I'm looking at if we can afford, we just put that extra fifty thousand, if we can afford Bushy Hill, that's a section, there's a section at the end of Bushy Hill that really, really needs it, so I'm hopeful that we can afford to do that.
Do we know when the state's gonna start paving Route eighty?
They were supposed to start.
Their reason, the catchphrase.
Yeah, I don't know that, um, they were, they were starting, they were starting work in the beginning of May, so I don't know when.
What determines the state and municipal, unanswerable question, what determines when they decide to, to pave a road like Route eighty?
You got me.
It's not horrible.
I would, I would suggest, parts of it are in pretty bad shape, um, and they probably have a schedule, I, I don't know that, though.
They're using an eight ball.
Yeah, it'd be, shake it up, shake it up, baby.
I bet it comes down to the point where, you know, if they don't do something to help it, it's gonna be worse, I mean, like, if you don't, if you don't fix the runway, it's just gonna.
And I would take a look, Route eighty and Deep River with all the trucks going in and out of Haynes.
They're gonna grind that?
No, no, all they're doing is laying it over the top.
They're raising the catch.
I asked them, and I actually argued with them pretty hard for the Deep River section to grind that, number one, we could use the millings, but number two, um, they're just putting new pavement on top of old that, that's not, all of it's not particularly good shape, and I don't think.
That's probably the least, least possible way to do it.
It is the least possible.
So they're not gonna fix the water problem, like in front of John Booby's house in the ambulance park?
I can't tell you whether they're going to successfully fix it, I can tell you that they're aware of it, and they're gonna try to work on it.
All right. Could that be covered? Actually, order.
Yeah, it is, especially in the wintertime.
Yeah, I'd like to put some potholes in front of my house. Slow down.
Let me tell you what, I just, I just.
That'll pop.
I just drove out to. I just drove out to Rochester, New York, and, and, uh, we have some roads that need some work, no question about it, but there are roads, all the way between Deep River and Rochester, they're in way worse shape than our worst roads, so.
Yeah, normally, you're gonna get hit hard.
Yeah. Um, Audience of Citizens, if anyone has anything? Can we take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I, I will call the meeting to order at seven, uh, seventeen, and, uh, the first order of business is to, um, ask for a moderator, so I can get my motion for a moderator.
I'm motion for Dwayne Gates to be a moderator.
Is there a second?
Second?
No.
I can't, I can't.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to appoint, um, Amy Winchell to be the clerk.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will hold a special town meeting on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven fifteen PM in the Richard H. Smith Town Hall, one seventy-four Main Street, Deep River, Connecticut, to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen at their regular meeting of May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Item one, tax credit for Deep River Housing Authority and Deep River Congregational Church Neighborhood Assistance Act. Programs that shall be included on a list pursuant to Chapter two twenty-eight A of the Connecticut General Statute's Neighborhood Assistance Act prior to submission of such list to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. And item two, tax ordinance for seniors renewal. This notice was dated at Deep River, Connecticut, on Monday, June third, two thousand nineteen.
All right, need, uh, call for a motion to adopt the call of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Need a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the item number one on the call of the meeting?
Second.
Okay, um, that's the opportunity for conversation, I don't see anyone here to ask for questions, although there is someone here to speak, uh, for the Congregational Church, and I would only ask you to do so if you are inclined to.
I'd briefly, sure.
Sure, and the cameras.
Well, I'm Joe Paluso, I'm vice chairman of the trustees, and, uh, we are community churches, and, you know, we serve a lot of the, the towns, um, we're trying to be active and endeavor to, to serve as many people as we can, and we thank the Selectmen for the support in the past. Uh, we have an interest in providing more insulation to some of the walls that have not been insulated, uh, replacing a seventy-year-old door, it's a bad need of replacement, and some upgrades for electrical efficiency, so that's the gist of it.
Okay, and, and you've suc, you've been successful using this in the past.
Very much so, the churches, as I said, a community church, and there's always a need to upgrade things.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good program, and, you know, obviously, anything that we can do to help, right? That is great.
Thank you.
And, uh, the Housing Authority, Joanne was here and spoke about that briefly at the last meeting when we moved it to here, but that's, that's a program that, that they're,